Today is May 1st, welcome to May everybody. It's 7:00 PM. This is the Riverside School District 96 School Board Meeting. Kathy, could you call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Ms. Glass?
Here.
Mr. Barsavi?
Present.
Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Mr. Marvall?
Here.
And Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Alright, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Doesn't appear as though we do.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, are there any changes proposed to the agenda by anybody? Nope, we don't have very much, so alright. Well, okay, so I'll hand it over to Principal Todd Gierman for a welcome opening.
Good evening, District 96 Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toy. Welcome to Ames Elementary School. Got a lot going on in the month of May, so I actually had to take some notes here to share all the great things going on. So it's actually hard to believe it is May 1st right now. Do you mind if I turn this a little bit this way? There we go. May 1st, 21 days of school left in the school year. This week, we celebrated our Ames students and how they showed perseverance and determination during the month of April during our school-wide SCL Assembly. During the month, that was during the month of April, I'm sorry. During the month of May, our students and staff will be learning about gratitude and we'll have an assembly at the end of the year to celebrate everything we learned about gratitude. We also had a very surprise visit yesterday during our parent kindergarten centers right here at Ames. Bluey and Bingo. I am too old to know what Bluey and Bingo are, so I had to actually Google them, but some of you might know what Bluey and Bingo are because you might watch the show. They came to Ames yesterday and they sang and danced with our kindergarten students during their centers. Kindergarters were just besides themselves. It was just like, they were, you were any autographs. And also, you know, only 21 days of school left, we're gonna pack a lot into the month of May. So besides the good old-fashioned reading, writing, and arithmetic, our students will also be participating in the following fun educational activities as we wrap up another successful school year here at Ames. Kindergarten's gonna be going to the zoo, so that's a field trip they have in store. First grade's gonna be going to the Peggy Nordabart Nature Museum this month, and they're taking a field trip to the North Riverside Police and Fire Department. Second grade's gonna be heading to the Morton Arboretum. Third grade's gonna be going to Napier Settlement and doing a Riverside trolley tour, which many of us may have taken part in ourselves. Fourth grade's going to Brookfield Zoo. I'm glad we're all sitting down here, because fifth grade has a wild ride in May. Here we go. Millennial Park and Chicago's First Lady Boat Tour's gonna be coming up. Fifth Grade Games Night over at Hauser. Fifth Grade Hauser Junior High Step-Up Day, where they get to follow the junior high schedule. The End of Year Picnic and Student Recognition Event. And the culminating Fifth Grade Clap Out, which is gonna take place on May 31st, where we're gonna send our fifth graders off to Hauser. So besides all the fun that our fifth graders, our fifth grade students will be participating in during their last month as an Ames Dolphin, our staff at Ames has done a wonderful job preparing these young scholars for their next chapter of their educational journey as they start Hauser Junior High in the fall. Always a lot of tears at that Fifth Grade Clap Out, whether a student might have started this year in fifth grade at Ames or in District 96, or their entire tenure since kindergarten, the time goes by so quick. But they're always prepared for Hauser, and yes, they will do fine opening up their combination lock. With that, thank you and welcome to Ames again.
Thank you. Alright, with that, we will move into committee reports, which, if I remember correctly, we only have two, or at least agenda items, right? Policy and...
Yeah, we have a brief budget amendment, and we also have the facility advisory agenda.
Oh, you're right. You are correct. Yep, yep, yep. Okay. So we will kick it off with the Education Committee, Ms. Kalik, on ELA curriculum. Nope, she's not here. What am I talking about? So I'll just invite Angela up to the table, and we're gonna talk about ELA Curriculum Resource Recommendation.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the curricular adoption, the ELA curricular adoption for our elementary, for elementary grades K through 5. I'll start with talking about how we got here, then talking about the middle school curricular resource update. Just give you a brief update on what we're doing with the middle school. Then look at the elementary curricular resource team, the process, and how we came to a recommendation. And then talk about the financial implications, because we know that is important, and then talk about what our next steps are. So how we got to where we're at now. In 2017-18, Benchmark Advance was adopted for kindergarten and first grade, and Savis Ready Gen was adopted for first through fifth grade. Our kindergarten teachers at that time, there was a committee that worked together to determine the ELA curriculum at that time. And the committee at that time felt that Ready Gen was too advanced, too high of a level for the kindergarten students and for a half-day program at that time. And so they ended up selecting a different program for kindergarten that then first-grade kids would start using, but then they would switch into Savis Ready Gen at some point in the year. Sixth through eighth grade adopted My Perspective, which is also a Savis program. We have a curriculum and program review schedule, and it's about every five years we review different curricular resources to ensure that they're still meeting our needs. And so it's fluid, it's ever-changing, but this is where we're currently at when we look at curricular resources. And so if you are looking in the 23-24 school year column and you see Review, K-5 Language Arts Reading, Writing, that's where we're at. You also see in there 6-8 Math, and I think I've talked at the table a little bit about where math is at, if not, I will make sure I do that. And then we also had adopted a science curricular resource this year. We reviewed and adopted one. So you can see that we tried to file, we tried to follow the cycle. We sometimes get off, but we do work on, working through a five-year, about a five-year cycle to review resources, so that we're not reviewing things at the same time, we're not trying to purchase, large purchases at the same time. And just because we review it doesn't mean we make a purchase, which I'm gonna talk about right now with the middle school. So 2017-18, we adopted programs. Now, about seven years later, six, seven years later, Ready Gen is actually phasing out, Ready Gen is being phased out by Savis, and they've started a new program called My View. And My Perspectives is being phased out, the edition we use, and they're only using their updated version. So at the middle school level, the middle school teachers started reviewing the new version of My Perspectives, because they liked the program they're using. Could there be things that could be fixed? Yes, no program is perfect, but for the most part, it provides them the tools they feel they need for instruction at the middle school level. So they wanted to see if the new version addressed some of the concerns that they did have, the things that they would wish would be fixed, or if it just, the new version wasn't going to work for them. So they started reviewing the new version. At the elementary level, we knew, one, Ready Gen was not gonna work for us, but we weren't sure if My View, the new version, was gonna be very similar to Ready Gen, or if it was gonna be something different. So for elementary, we went through a full review cycle, which did include starting with a look at My View. So at middle school, they did, we did ask for the updated resources, just to see if we could get some samples, so teachers could start just perusing them. So in January, we received some samples, they started looking through it. We had, Mr. Harvallis, Ms. May, and I have, had gone to all the ELA grade-level meetings to talk about how My Perspective is working for them, what challenges they had, and we also talked with the company about those challenges, where they pointed out, this is how we've addressed this, this is what we've done. So what we've talked about with sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade ELA teachers is that we do feel that My Perspective meets our needs. So we wanna see if the new version does, so we're gonna take next year to pilot the new version. And if it meets our needs, then we will just continue our contract with them on a multi-year contract, and if it doesn't meet our needs, we're seeing a problem with the update, the updated version, then we'll go into a full review cycle then. So that's where we're at with 6-8 ELA. For kindergarten through fifth grade, you see here, we had a very robust team. The team consisted of two grade-level teachers at each, two teachers at each grade level, kindergarten through fifth grade, four of our five reading specialists, two EL teachers who piloted the resource to see, there's a Spanish version, we wanted to make sure there was a Spanish version with whatever program we looked at. So when we got to the pilot, the two EL teachers, Melissa Basile at Blythe and Minnie Maywood at Ames, when we piloted, they piloted the all-Spanish curriculum with their TBE students. If you remember, we talked about those are students who receive instruction in their native language as well as in English. And then they also piloted the TPI resources with the students who receive support in English academic language, if they're an English language student. Ms. Hefner was our principal representative, and we did have a special education representative as well. So great class representation across grades, across support staff, and across schools. And Margot Sakely, who we had a contract with to work on this work with from the Catalyst for Educational Change, worked with me through the whole process to lead this review process. So in September, we identified our committee members and we started our introductory work. Margot and I worked with the team to determine what tools would be used, we discussed what were the non-negotiables that we would have when looking at resources. Some of those non-negotiables included, we wanted a good phonics program for primary, we wanted obviously a rigorous curriculum, we were looking for good writing instruction because Ready Gen didn't have a solid set writing instructional program, and we wanted to make sure that there was a focus on comprehension and responding to literature. We, Margot and I shared programs that we identified for an initial review. There were six publishers that Margot and I had identified, and we looked at those identifications based off of Ed Reports, which is a company that looks at resources, looks how they're standard aligned, looks at how their programs are doing in terms of assessment, student assessment and achievement, and then they give them a rating on, like a green, a yellow, or a red. And so we picked only green programming that we looked at to review. And then we had, from October through December, we had those six publishers come in and talk to the team about their materials. We had, as you see at the beginning of October, we developed a rubric that would look at all those non-negotiables. And so we gave that rubric to the publishers, so that they weren't trying to throw darts at Jell-O, and they knew what we were looking for, and some of them were able to address what we were looking for, and some of them weren't. For instance, one of the companies we looked at didn't have a phonics program yet, and they're just like, well, a lot of people buy this phonics program to go with us. So we knew we weren't going to pilot them. Another program said, well, we don't have a Spanish version, so we knew we weren't going to pilot them. So that was how we, some of the ways we ended up narrowing it down. And then with the ones that were left that had all the non-negotiables for us, we were looking at the rubric and how they scored on the rubric, but then also looking at which ones we felt would best provide the rigor we know District 96 students need, but also ensure the support of our diverse learners. In December, we narrowed it down from the six to two resources and decided we were going to pilot Hooten Mifflin into reading, and we would pilot Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, which I will just call CKLA from this point forward. So in January, we had professional learning for our inter-reading pilot, where teachers learned how to navigate the resource online, learned about the handheld resources, like the actual hard copies of the teacher's manual. Inter-reading has many different facets, and so there are many different books to go with the many different facets, so they had to figure out how to manage all of those materials. And we piloted inter-reading for five weeks, which was the equivalent to one to two modules or units. In March, we started our professional learning for CKLA and had finished the pilot from inter-reading, so we debriefed on that inter-reading pilot and what went well, what didn't go well, what were the challenges, what were some of the gaps. And then the team decided, they rated whether, how they felt the program did in each of the non-negotiables. Then we moved into the pilot in March through April, we moved into a five-week pilot for CKLA, which was again equivalent to one or two units. And then at the end of that pilot, which was, it feels like so long ago, but it was actually the 18th of April, so not too long ago, we debriefed on the Amplify CKLA pilot, same way we did with inter-reading, and we talked about how it measured up on the non-negotiables. And we talked about what worked, what didn't work, and what were any concerns that people had. And then we compared the two programs and a final decision was made. A couple of things that I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of as we talk about how we got to our recommendation. Inter-reading and CKLA are two strong programs. I was very excited when those were the two that rose to the top for the pilot. There are many things that I, as the Director of Teaching and Learning, found very valuable in inter-reading, and there are many things I found very valuable in CKLA. With that said, they are two strong programs with different approaches. Specifically, Amplify CKLA has an approach at the primary level where they focus on both oral and reading comprehension. And so research shows that when you are orally comprehending stories, you can comprehend at a higher level than when you're reading, because when you are reading and decoding words while trying to comprehend, you're working on the decoding and you're spending effort on decoding, so you need a lower level, a lower lexicon level, lower grade level, access level to read and comprehend than you do to listen and comprehend. And so Amplify CKLA works both on oral comprehension and reading comprehension, where inter-reading works on just the reading comprehension, so book in hand all the time, reading and exploring text. Where CKLA, teachers are reading out loud at the primary level and asking questions and developing those oral skills, those oral listening skills. The other thing we realized as we were debriefing on the two programs is that five weeks is a short pilot, and it's hard to make sure you're capturing everything in five weeks. And so we noticed when we were debriefing that there were concerns coming up about Amplify CKLA from some of the teachers, maybe they said like, the assessments weren't rigorous enough, they only offered this type of assessment. Or they might have said that one of the programs didn't have sound letter cards, and they, those are important, to have the sound letter cards for primary and kindergarten. But when you go and dig into it, they were there, they just didn't see it because it was only a five-week pilot. So when we looked at their concerns, dug into the resources more, we could see that they both had the materials and the things they were looking for, but people were partial to their decisions. And so we did have a split decision on our hands, where one level teachers preferred one program, another level preferred another program, with some intermixing between the two. So as the Director of Teaching and Learning, it became my role to determine not majority rules, but what was truly going to push one over the other to be the best resource for our students. So I looked at a couple of things that is offered by one, but not the other, and one of the things is background knowledge. Research shows that background knowledge is key to students' understanding reading and to students comprehending reading. You can see by that quote, that students who properly decode the words and understand the basic structure of a text may still come up short in measures of comprehension because they fail to activate relevant existing background knowledge. And so as we were working with different programs, specifically Amplify CKLA, they said to us during their presentation, read this passage. And so we all read the passage, and I don't know if you read it before tonight, but we all read the passage, and everybody in this room can decode this passage. Everybody knows all the words in that passage, but does anybody know what the passage is about?
I had no idea what this was. Cricket game?
It's gotta be cricket. Definitely UK, yes.
But I don't know cricket, so I'm just guessing with the scores and the way they're talking and English innings and...
Exactly. And that's what it is. It is a cricket game.
Okay.
But if you know nothing about Engla, or English sports, if you know nothing about cricket, if you're an American who doesn't even know that sport exists, you can read all those words, but it means nothing to you, because you have nothing to attach it, no background knowledge to attach it to. Someone in England, a fifth grader in England, will read that and know exactly what is happening. So that's just showing how important it is to have background knowledge when you're reading.
So that was my question. I wasn't sure if this was like a trick to prove a point, but like, this, this actually means something to somebody that knows?
Oh, yeah. It is about cricket, and it's a score report from a cricket game.
Just read it with a Cockney accent.
Think about someone from Europe listening to NFL football.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to translate the commentator thing.
Right.
I read it four times, and I was like, okay.
Yep. So I do wanna go back to this. This is called Scarborough's Rope, this picture here. And it is a diagram that just explains the important concepts in reading, in reading programs. You may be, you may know that Illinois just adopted, the state of Illinois just adopted an Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. And that literacy plan is a plan for what districts should look for when they are looking at reading language arts curriculum. And it focuses on Scarborough's Rope. And so the top, the orange, is about language comprehension, and you wanna make sure all those pieces are in a good program for good language comprehension instruction. And the bottom talks about the word recognition that needs to happen, which you probably know is like the fluency, the phonemic awareness, the phonics instruction that happens. That's the word recognition. And when both of those are happening and you bring them together and integrate them, that's where you're going to get strong results in reading instruction. Both the programs, inter-reading and Amplify CKLA, have all those pieces of Scarborough's Rope. But Amplify CKLA is very deliberate and systemic in how they present, how they have students learning about background knowledge. Where inter-reading's background knowledge piece are side points in the teacher's manual that says, if you need to connect this for students, ask them about this, or point out this. So it's kind of a side thought or an afterthought, where background knowledge is the foundation of Amplify CKLA. So what this slide and the next slide shows is just, as they're building background knowledge, these concepts are gonna connect. And so when a student gets to third or fourth grade after having been in Amplify CKLA, they will have had like the basis of other pieces. So for instance, if you start Science Connections, we are not gonna be doing pre-K, but if you look at kindergarten under Science Connections, Taking Care of the Earth is a module in kindergarten. And then in first grade, they're gonna talk about the history of the earth. And then from the history of the earth, in second grade, they're gonna talk about cycles in nature. In third grade, they're gonna talk about ecology. In fourth grade, they're gonna talk about geology. And in fifth grade, it's going to lead to chemical matter. And every year, it's building on that knowledge. And if you look in the teacher's manual, it says, students will have learned this in previous years, so that kids have that prior knowledge that they're building on. So these are the different topics that are happening in Amplify CKLA. It's very deliberate, very systemic in how they build background knowledge for students. So, as I said, both programs are strong. Both programs address background knowledge, but inter-reading offers tips for helping kids understand and connect to stories where Amplify CKLA bases its resource on the development of background knowledge in an intentional systemic manner. Because of the background knowledge and the rigor of the units and the topics, the recommendation that comes out of our committee, and like I said, it was a divided committee, and in the end, it was me, the Director of Teaching and Learning, that had to determine what was gonna be the best resource for our students, with the input from the teachers and listening to their concerns and making sure anyone who had concerns about Amplify CKLA, that we addressed the concerns. And they were valid concerns. Some of them were concerns because they didn't experience in the five-week pilot, and some of them are solid concerns that we're going to look at during the course of this first year of adoption and see what we might need to switch around, if it's sequencing that we might need to switch around, or if it is another resource for phonics, not for phonics, for writing at the kindergarten level that we might need to look at. Because in talking to another district, they said the kindergarten writing for Amplify CKLA was something that they weren't really thrilled with, but everything else outweighed that. So we're gonna look at how it works for our students, and if it's still a concern, then we will be addressing that at the end of the year. But all the pros of Amplify CKLA outweigh that piece and really justify us going with Amplify CKLA forward. So what does that mean financially? I did put in here what we paid in our first year of implementation for Benchmark Advance and Ready Gen. And I just put it in here because of all the times I've come to the table for a curriculum adoption, it hasn't been as high as an ELA curriculum adoption is. So I just wanted to show for reference what we've paid for it in 2017-18. So thinking about six, seven years back, it was a total of $221,000. Once you have that first year of implementation with an English Language Arts program and you're paying for the classroom materials, so like the sound letter card, you're paying for the teacher's manuals, like all those things that you're not gonna have to replenish, then the cost of the following years becomes replenishing the consumables. And so you can see from 2017, where it was $221,000, to this past year where we spent $53,000, you'll start to see a decrease in cost as you continue on through the years. So when I looked at the two resources that we were looking at, that we piloted, CKLA and inter-reading, in the first year, come out about the same. But if you do a three-year contract where you end up receiving discounts from year to year, Amplify CKLA does come out a little bit higher, but it's because of, since the program is based on foundational knowledge, there are multiple books that the teachers need for the different units, and where Hooten Mifflin is your traditional teacher basal book, where every chapter is in that book, there's less teacher materials. So that first year does end up being a little bit higher, and then your subsequent years for the consumables that we'd have to be are a little bit higher with Amplify CKLA. So as I said, the recommendation is for Amplify CKLA. And we know that there are some teachers who are still grappling with this decision, and so what some of the next steps are, is that I'm working with colleagues in other districts who are in their first or second year of implementation of Amplify CKLA and are seeing great results, and working on site visits, especially for our primary teachers, but also for intermediate teachers if it's available. We will determine the professional learning schedule for our teachers and our principals. There'll be a building leader session in August for our principals, so that they are learning about the program and can support their teachers. There will be instructional coaching professional learning for our three instructional coaches. And then we'll have an introduction session in August, another session where the CKLA reps will come and help plan with our teachers in the beginning of September, so that they're kicking off on the right foot. And then what CKLA does is they provide coaches that come to the building, work with the building individually, and they'll work with the instructional coaches too. And they will either go in classrooms and co-plan, co-teach, or they'll meet during their collaborative plan time to talk about what's working, what troubles are they having, how can they assist, how can they help. So each building will have a coach three to four times a year, and then, as I said, we're going to monitor this first year of implementation, so that we can make adjustments with sequencing, we can make adjustments with materials, we can work with the company on where we might need more professional learning as the year is going on. So, do you have any questions for me?
Is the CKLA, is some of the frustrations from some of the less-than-enthralled teachers due to, is Ready Gen different, or is CKLA that different from Ready Gen as well?
It is. It's different from Ready Gen and inter-reading. Inter-reading and Ready Gen have similar structures. Inter-reading is, is still a better program than Ready Gen. Now My View is to us for our needs, but it is a different mindset shift, it is a different way of instructing. With CKLA, that oral reading piece is huge. They're going to spend time reading out loud to kids at the primary level, asking questions while kids are comprehending, and that's just new. Our students aren't used to sitting on their carpet and listening to a story and have to answer in questions. They might be used to sitting on a carpet and hearing a fun story, when you have like reading time or carpet time, but they're not used to, why did the character travel to that area? Why did they trade this? What made this a good person, or whatever the case might be? They're not used to that part. And so that is part of the concern, but as I explained to the team, it will be new, it will be different, and it will probably be hard in the beginning, but we don't shy away from hard if it's good for kids. So it's the instructional practices, and then because it builds background knowledge, it's a lot of focus on science and social studies types of concepts. And it's not necessarily like one of the modules in, in one of the grade levels, I can't remember which one, is like, How to Be a Good Citizen, which is a very good topic, but it's not forming all that background knowledge that's gonna help our students on assessments, that's gonna help our students become better readers, that's gonna help our students connect to reading better. It's more of a general type, broader type lesson that's happening in that inter-reading or in a Ready Gen.
So perhaps a little bit more comprehensive, which is kind of our overall goal anyway, and I don't wanna beat this one down, but there's always the discussion about standardized tests and the fact that certain individuals are advantaged depending on their background. So this is essentially hitting the same topic early on, where you're trying to create a common background?
Right.
Yes?
Which is, yes, which is where I was and where the teachers who saw CKLA as the resource for us were there at, and where I know our teachers are going to get to when they see the results from it.
And sometimes change takes time.
Yes.
I guess the only other, are kids gonna struggle transitioning from Ready Gen to CKLA, excuse me, when you're, say, a third grader? Because you haven't been exposed to this where, or not? Or it just takes a little more effort on the part? Or it just takes a little more effort on the part of the instructor?
I think, I think it takes a little bit more effort on the part of the instructor. When I think about the pilot that happened, and we were in the classrooms, we did, the reps and I went into classrooms to see students learning, they were engaged, and they loved it, and they were learning from it. Was it harder? Yes, but I don't think the transition was even hard during the five-week pilot. I was in one class, I was in that one class for a different reason. One of the teachers will, every year, invite people in to read to her class, and so I was in there for my annual reading. But she's like, "Oh, Ms. Dossel's the one who's in charge of you guys helping me with Into Reading and Amplify." And she's like, before you ask your questions, ever, because every guest gets put on the hot seat, she's like, "Let's talk to her about what we like and what we don't like." And just from the mouth of these students, they were saying, "We like this, we like this," and naming a whole bunch of things they liked about Amplify. They named some things about Into Reading. But then the teacher said, "Show of hands, who thinks that Into Reading is the one we need?" And it was three of her kids picked it. Who liked Amplify Learning? And kids were like, "I'm learning things I haven't learned before. I am enjoying reading, and they're telling me I like the hub where I get to do extension readings, based off of, this particular class was learning about the Maya, Incas, and Aztecs." So even the kids were enjoying it, and liking what they were hearing. So, to answer your question, might there be a small transition? Maybe. But really, I think that we have such strong teachers and such great professionals, that they're going to be able to make it a smooth transition for the kids.
And I was not questioning their ability to do so.
Oh, no, not at all. I did not hear that. I did not hear that.
So, I wonder, is there a concern, or maybe part of the concern, is it maybe for older kids, that they're not certain they'll be able to keep their attention, or that they'll be able to remain focused while they're having, like, a long passage read to them? Is that perhaps something that would come up?
I think at the primary level, that's part of the concern, is that with an oral reading, not having a book in hand, because Ready Gen, they've got their textbook that they're following along in. I think the teachers are struggling to see that kids do listen to oral comprehension, that part of it is how you are telling the story, how you are engaging them, and that with time, they're going to get better at it. I think that is part of the angst with Amplify versus Into Reading. But the other part is, I know the writing instruction is a little bit different. There's a whole separate writing book for Into Reading, and Amplify incorporates their writing in response to what you're reading, which is also, you know, we don't teach to tests, but we do want to make sure our kids have certain skills. And one of them is being able to look back in a text and talk about the evidence you see. And Amplify does, that's how they teach writing. They still teach the five-step process of plan, draft, edit, publish, I'm missing one in there, because it's five steps, not four. But they still teach the process, they just don't have this separate book that, like, today we're going to write a narrative, and we're going to brainstorm about our favorite event that happened in our life. Like, it's just a different type of writing. And I think that maybe, at the primary level, they were looking for more of the Into Reading type writing versus the CKLA type writing.
I think, I appreciate how much rigor you put around the process, and I wish the outcome would have been a little bit easier to come to.
You and me.
For you. But it does seem that the process was really well-done, and I appreciate that you had so much input from different teachers at different levels, and support staff, and I guess, just a few questions that I had, is, you know, we're implementing a new science curriculum. We're implementing a new ELA curriculum. This ELA curriculum is not, you know, not everyone's on board with it, right?
Right.
So, as we do this next year, are there resources that we need to consider as a board, to really help support the teachers?
I really just need your understanding with the professional learning budget. You know, and I'll work with Jim on how it fits into the budget and everything, but knowing that this first year, professional learning probably will be higher with this adoption, because that's how teachers are going to be successful. If they have the support to understand the programming and know the ins and outs of it from the beginning, and they're not left, like, it's not a soft professional learning piece where they just get a foundation, and it's not really dug into deeply. If they just get this foundation, and they're left to figure it out on their own, that's not going to make people feel better. Where if you have, you really pour into the professional learning in that first year, and have their hand held, pretty much, at all levels, that first year, so that they know all the different resources, and they're getting their questions answered. And if they don't feel comfortable teaching writing, the coach is helping them understand, like, this is what you're looking for, this is where it is. Let me come in and help show you how we can make this work. If the board understands that professional learning might be a little bit higher this year, that right there does wonders.
And that will come in the form of external consultants, or?
The program.
Instructional coaching?
The CKLA, any, any program, has professional development trainers who will come and train on their program. So for iReady, we often have someone come at least once a year, and they'll come and train about iReady. These are people who know the program, know the ins and outs of it, and that's their job, is to go from district to district to train. So CKLA has that. They have people who are just ingrained in CKLA's practices, procedures, and curriculum, and they'll come in and they'll be the coaches. So, we're paying to the company.
Okay, got it. On like, an hourly consulting basis, or something like that?
Correct, yeah.
Got it, okay. And then, there was talk in the past about moving more towards, like, standards-based grade reporting. Is this supportive of that?
Absolutely. So, it's all standards-aligned. We would not, at this point, pick any curricular resource that's not. So it is standards-aligned. One of the nice things about any program, but that we have with Amplify CKLA, is there's a scope and sequence for, these standards are taught in this lesson, in this skills knowledge, this skills unit, and this knowledge unit, and it lays out all the standards when they're taught throughout the whole year. So that, when we move to reporting on standards, the teachers have right in front of them, I taught Unit Three, Lesson One, and it covered these standards. And so they can see it right in front of them, what it's covering.
Got it, okay. Even after presenting to the, or, did you have the opportunity to take it back to the teachers about the elements of the background knowledge?
Yes.
And the oral comprehension, and even?
You love what you love. You love what you love.
All right.
And again, there were a lot of great things about Into Reading. I don't, I don't fault them at all. We selected two really strong programs. So while I also wish it'd been more cohesive, I appreciate that there were different pieces that everybody brought, every different lenses, that helped people pick different pieces of programming.
Yeah. I mean, the part that really resonated with me, and this sort of builds off Joel's point, is not everyone comes in with the same understanding, right? And into our kindergarten setting. And so, and not everyone is the same kind of learner, right? Some people are more visual learners, other people are more auditory learners. And so, I think that this sort of can serve many different learners. And also, to have those elements that weave in through, where it almost seems like you're teaching elements of science, or elements of history, but it's part of the ELA curriculum, seems really smart, so.
I agree.
That's all I got.
So I'll piggyback on that last thing, then. Could you go back to those slides, that, the two, I don't know what you just called it, the ribbon thing, or rope? So, I did hear that.
More, you have to twist.
No, 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 this is good. Well, I think, this is, I assume this is the rope, right? Yeah. So, that is kind of what Selena said at the end. That's how I was sort of trying to fit this together. So this isn't, like, we just adopted a science curriculum, that's not here. This is using science, history, whatever.
Yes.
To further the reading comprehension, or reading and writing, or whatever. So the science is still independent.
Yes.
But I'm sure, is there overlap between?
There will be some overlap, yes. But Amplify is very quick to tell you, this doesn't cover all the science standards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, it can't replace the science unit.
But the students are going to see cohesion through these different programs. Even though they're independent things, there's cohesion that kind of goes together.
Yes, so for instance, on Monday, we're actually going to be working on the scope and sequence for Mystery Science, which we just adopted for next year. And one of the things that teachers will have at their disposal is the pacing guide for Amplify CKLA also. Because, for instance, in first grade, I was saying to the principals today, in first grade, the first graders learn about astronomy. So, you can see, like, right above the history of the earth is astronomy. And in first grade, Mystery Science, there's a star, sun, moon unit. So, looking at, can we line those two up, so that you're teaching about the star, sun, moon, in science, while also talking about astronomy in first grade? So, there will be some overlap with science, and we'll try to use that to our advantage as well.
And, so each thing in these columns, I presumed, was an exhibit of, like, what's actually in the pre-K curriculum?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's very interesting.
I just had a quick, I had a question on the background knowledge, just standards-based reporting. Also, yeah, want to be very mindful, you know, math curriculum, what, a year ago, science, ELA, you know, it's, it's a lot. It's a big, it's a big ask to be constantly, you know, changing some of this. I understand the reasons. One other question I have is, implementation of this curriculum, what effect might that have on individuals who receive, like, reading intervention, or conversely, like, advanced learners? Things like 504 plans? I mean, I think about my ADHD daughter, sitting there, listening to someone read out loud. Like, I can't expect that she's just going to just take her into a room herself and read to her, so.
Yeah, we won't.
Yeah, just curious, like, what, what effect it might have on things like people receiving intervention, the advanced, you know, the different part of the triangle, and any 504 plans.
So, with intervention, reading specialists were on the team, and they learned about some of the intervention programs, but that would be part of the professional learning, too, and how they can use different material pieces to support students outside the classroom. Same with our English Language Learners. And there's one part of Amplify that our English Language Learner has piloted, it's called Language Studio. It's part of CKLA, and it's not just good for helping our English Language Learners connect to what's being taught in the classroom, it's also good for our students who are Tier Two or Tier Three, needing supports. It's good for helping them also connect with what's being done in the classroom. So, they'll get training on that. With, we also noticed, while piloting, that there were times that students were supposed to be pulled for services. And at one of the schools, instead of pulling kids, one of the specialists actually pushed into the classroom, and worked with the kids while in there. And so that's what we hope to work towards, is more push-in rather than pull-out. Because if we, what we found is, if you're pulling kids out, they're missing the background knowledge stuff, right? So we want to try to pull out less and less, if possible. So, that's one of the things that I'll be working with the reading specialist with, on how can we do more push-in service, rather than pull-out? And that's going to take time. It's not something we'll see happen in September and October, or even in this first year. It's something we're going to have to work towards. In terms of the other part of the diamond, where you look at students who need enrichment, there are enrichment activities that say, if you notice your students have a grasp of this, have them go into what's called the Language Hub, it's a part of the digital experience, where they're going to read things at a higher level, where it's going to require a higher level of comprehending, and responding to literature. And so I want to work with our advanced learning teachers on their ability to use that, which will connect to the units being taught in the classroom. Want to work with our advanced learning teachers on how they can use that to implement for advanced learning, especially at fourth, well, in fourth and fifth grade, because right now, advanced learning is a pull-out for ELA, where they're pulled out three days, three, two to three days a week. So, again, want to make sure kids aren't missing key parts of instruction, because they're being pulled out for advanced learning enrichment. So how can we have them work together on that? So that will be part of our first year of implementation, too. And then in terms of, you know, talking about students who might have ADHD, or just, like, have struggles being able to sit still for certain periods of time, for whatever reason, like, just all of those pieces, that is a concern. That's part of the concern that some of our teachers on the team had, is just like, what's going to happen to those kids? Because they're not going to just sit still, because now we're doing oral reading. But that's where we, as educators, have to put in supports to help all of our students. So is it reading a shorter part of it, and maybe you're not reading the whole story out loud? Is it, you can play the story also, so is it, you can play it off the computer, so is it switching off between reading it or playing it? And there's also picture cards that go with it, whether you're reading out loud, or you're playing it on the computer, there's picture cards that go with it. So, it will be a matter of how we work together, me as the Director of Teaching and Learning, Nora Garrity as the Director of Special Education, how we're working together to help our teachers with modifications and adaptations, and just looking at, what's good for one kid is often good for all. So, what are we doing to support our kids, rather, again, than just running away from it?
Would we get rid of, like, Lexia?
No. Not at all.
You didn't even finish that.
Yeah, I don't. No. So, Lexia is, like, as we know, we have a few individualized pathway-type programs. Lexia is more individualized, to students' needs. So, this is all whole group, and there will be some small group instruction that comes along with it, for interventions and supports and enrichment. But Lexia is helping students grow at their pace with some of those phonics skills as well.
And last question. I know the committee was looking between these two specific curriculums, but was there a thought that Jen, Jen?
Ready Gen.
Ready Gen was meeting our needs?
No.
Okay, so that?
There wasn't. It wasn't, there was not that thought at any point. But again, Ready Gen is being phased out, it's no longer.
So let's move.
So my view is, service this new program, instead of Ready Gen. And we did look at it, but we felt that these two were just better.
Thanks for clarifying that again.
No worries. Sorry, one more question. As you're doing that initial filter, does price play into it?
The initial, which initial?
That initial filter of, like, okay, we're looking at six, based on some reading.
No, we did not.
Who were piloting, is what you're asking?
No.
Pardon me?
The group that is piloting, cost is not, is that what you're asking?
No, I was wondering if, like, as she looks through the resources, and does, and looks at the ratings, if she's, when she's narrowing it down to, like, the six that she's considering, if she's thinking at that point, like, this one, this one costs too much, we can't look at that. And she said, no.
No, I did not.
Okay.
I, we look at the price once we narrow it down, because if, if it's a program that's not going to meet our needs, even if it's a cheaper one, it's not going to meet our needs, so we wouldn't look at it. So we want to make sure we're looking at costs between programs that we know would be good for District 96 students.
So I have a, out of left-field question, but it might take too much time, but I, I'm curious, I can't help but be curious about this, anyway. Didn't, I didn't catch it the first time where you mentioned they had English learners on the committee, or English learner instructors on the committee. So I'm wondering, if you're an English learner, how do you learn English Language Arts?
Great question. Then, I don't know that I would do sufficient justice to answering, but I will tell you that through the pilot, Ms. Maywood and Ms. Basile had their own coach, who was helping them with how to utilize a program to best meet student needs. And they have been, for years, even before this resource, been teaching kids how to learn English Language Arts. So, I don't know the techniques to doing it. I think that's a great question, but I don't think I could answer it fully and completely, and be confident I'm answering it correctly.
Okay.
Which is why I do not have a bilingual endorsement.
That's good. To that, and this is probably, this is to you and Martha. I can't remember when, but we had a number of the EL teachers present to us. And next time they do, can we bring that detail back? Because we do have so many more EL kids that we're trying to serve, and maybe that would give us, or at least me, greater insight into some of the challenges that we've got going? And it's, that's a long-term.
That'd be really interesting. I think they do a great job, I'm sure.
It's a great question from Dan.
It is. It absolutely is a great question, and I, yes, we can do that.
But I'm assuming no major concerns that?
They, the two EL teachers who piloted this, really just stood behind this program.
Okay.
Again, they both said, we'll go either way. We can work with either program, because they were great programs, they were both good programs. But when they talked about the results their kids had from this program, you could just hear that they felt stronger about this one. I know Ms. Maywood had said her kids were so excited to come in and read their book with her, and that they would go off, I can't remember exactly what they were talking about, but then she was showing them a map, because it had to do with, like, the story they were reading had to do with another country. And so, now they're pulling out a map, and looking at where this country is located. And then they were talking about how that related to what they have at their house. And she just said the engagement was so strong with this program.
Which, I feel like that maybe was getting to your answer, or at least when I heard your question, that's what I was looking for. Because, like, you could explain it fully and completely, and I still am not going to Because like you could explain it fully and completely and I still am not gonna understand, right? So, like as long as they're feeling great about it.
They are, yes.
That, that's part of it, but honestly, it is, it's, it's, okay, where, how do you get from here to there? I guess that's just in its, in phrasing it itself. If you're a non-English speaker, how do you get to learn English?
Right.
Yeah.
Especially, you know, Spanish and there are definitely different grammar rules. I don't know, I'm sure we could, we could do a week on it and it wouldn't do it justice.
We must do eighteen weeks on it.
Eighteen weeks, yeah. Okay, we need a master's program for the board, is that it?
My, uh, and I think that's a good point though, because I just had this conversation with my daughter yesterday, exactly what you said, because she's become really good friends with a English learner that came last year. And even I, when I hear them talking, I'm like, holy, like the, just in one year. But, you know, we've, I've always been told like the best way to learn a language is immersion. Like go move to a country, you know, study abroad things, which I never did.
Definitely not the U K.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but that was one of the things I was trying to explain to her is like with certain languages, like if you actually completely translate them to English, they're in the wrong order. Like English is a weird language compared to other languages. So, like I think that, I think that's a great question, you know, just the question itself. So, as long as they're feeling good about it, I think that's what really matters to me. All right.
I'm curious too, like this curriculum, I guess, what were some of the thoughts as it relates to like, you know, like diversity, equity and inclusion, seeing yourself represented and like the material? You know, I, I think of families and communities. I think of nursery rhymes and fables. I think of fairy tales, like growing up in a different country, what those look like to me, what those sound like. I'm just curious, some of these categories give me just pause about kind of cultural representation?
Actually, now, you know, full transparency, one of our team members is just like, so who decided this is the background knowledge we needed? Which is a great question, right?
Yeah.
Um, but I will say, as I was digging into the resources, so I was knowledgeable about it and so that I could answer the questions that some of our, our teachers had. I can't speak to every unit yet, but I know like in kindergarten, when talking about the five senses, they end up talking about Ray Charles and Helen Keller. So, I know that, um, and then there's a, was it first grade? First grade, when talking about, which unit did they pilot? Maybe it was different land, similar stories. They had folktales and stories from different countries. There is, um, in second grade, you'll see there is a unit on, do, do, do. Which one is it? Well, there's immigration, not sure what's covering, which, which, who's covering in immigration. But there is in second grade, maybe it's in ancient Greek civilizations, maybe, where they're gonna talk about how there were religions that started civilizations, which when you think about our students who are Jewish, one of them is gonna be Judaism. So, our Jewish students will see themselves in those stories. So, it is happening in different areas. At this moment, I can't speak to the specifics of all of it though. But that was, diversity was one of our non-negotiables and it's still ranked out from the people who piloted and dug into it at their grade levels.
And I know the other thing, I just make the presentation a lot longer and thank you, Angela, you've done an outstanding job. You've done a lot of communication with other districts too.
Yes.
And other districts who are in the same, you know, phase of adoption, but also districts that have been ahead of us with adoption, specifically districts that have adopted this. And I would describe some of those districts that you've shared with me as even more diverse in terms of their, their student population. And they've been very, very pleased with the program. So, that's another good indicator.
Thank you. Yes.
I got some picky things, but?
You've got some what?
Picky things.
Okay.
All right, so on the, on the cost, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So, your first slide, the first one of these three, you were telling me that im- implementation year, this is what it cost us in twenty seventeen?
Correct.
Okay. So?
Go one, sorry, other way.
No, this, yeah, that one. This was, this was what we adopted in twenty seventeen, eighteen?
Correct.
Okay, and that was a total of two twenty-one, seven thirteen?
Correct.
So, two forward, I think.
Are you doing inflation math?
No, 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 well, sort of, but not really. So, it's two twenty-one, so I mean, yeah, essentially, yes, essentially, I mean, it's only, I just forgot my number, thank you, Stephanie. Fifty thousand, roughly fifty-five thousand dollars more.
Correct.
Eight years later, six years later. That doesn't feel too terrible. I think if you go one up, you're sa- um, no, back one, I'm sorry, that one. So, you're saying if we just continue forward, you're just trying to show us if we continue forward, it's only fifty-three thousand, but reminding us it cost us two hundred twenty-one to get that up. This is phasing out, we don't feel like this meets our needs, so we gotta get rid of it. So, our options are these two. And so, you gave us a one-year and you gave us a three-year. I heard some concerns about not digging in and we're gonna assess those in the first year. So, are you recommending a one-year or?
I'm recommending a three-year. Because the first year of implementation always has bumps. So, what I'm saying when I say we're going to be analyzing it and reflecting on how it's going is then we're going to address the bumps.
Okay.
But the program is good for three years.
Okay.
The program is good, probably longer than three years, but I'm, we're starting with a three-year contract.
Okay, so when you say we'll address it in the first year, it's just getting through the hurdles of adopting and doing programs?
Exactly. It's addressing the, the pain points that will come across in the first year of implementation.
Okay, because when you said that, I, my, I immediately went to?
As soon as I said that, I thought the same thing.
Okay. Because I went to this slide going, how are you gonna get out of a three-year contract after the first year?
And I have no desire to get out of a three-year contract. It's just a, how are we, we're going to reflect on our implementation so we can address what pain points we're having. But it's not because, the pain points are there because the program's bad. The program's good. And as Martha was saying, I have been talking to other districts who are either in this phase of adoption where we're at, looking at adopting for next year, or have been implementing for a year or for two years. And they speak highly of it. And even Martha and I were in a meeting with a couple of people from West Forty and they were saying, they were speaking highly of it and saying that they see results in different districts that have started implementing it too. So, no, we won't want to get out of a three-year contract. We'll just be addressing pain points that we see across that first year.
Um, and then this is more, I, I don't know how relevant this is, but like we did, the, the coaches got brought up. And one of the things I noticed looking at your list here is that there were no coaches. I, I know we only have two and so their resources are scarce, but is, is that something that maybe?
So, here's a great thing.
Okay.
Sam Crowley was one of the original piloters before we even knew coaching was gonna come about and she was gonna apply and she was gonna get it. So, Sam was the, one of the third grade teachers who piloted it and now Sam's one of our coaches.
Ah. Cool, that worked out. Okay.
Yeah. And many people, I've been going to Sarah Hickey and talking to her about what they were experiencing in both programs. So, while Sarah wasn't trained in it, while she hasn't been hands-on in it, she has some very basic knowledge of it. And then her and Sam have been talking since it started to look like it was heading this way.
Okay. And then, so on that slide, and this is just, this is just how I think. And so if this doesn't bother anybody else, this is just a personal thing for me. I was trying to bounce between how, like who at the schools and at what grades. And it didn't appear that this was in any particular order, alphabetical, grade, school?
It's alphabetical order.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, by last name?
Yes.
I just picked up on that, okay. I, I don't know. I would prefer it to be by school or by grade or something. It, I think for me, it would just be easier to kind of see the diversity that you have in there. But I figured it out, it wasn't that difficult. They just, the way my brain works, that would have been easier, so that's my picky thing.
I can tell you, we had a higher number of classroom teachers from Central. Central sent the most classroom teachers. But every school was represented.
Yep. And I think every gr- grade in every school, if I counted correctly?
Every what?
Yeah, okay.
Every grade, yes, because there were two teachers from kindergarten through fifth. And then because the reading specialists were all a part of it, everyone's reading specialist was represented from all four elementary schools. And then, uh, English language learner-wise, Minnie Maywood from Ames, where we have a really high population of English language learners and we have the T B E. program. And Melissa Basile from Blythe, where we're just about at that point where we're about to tip at Blythe. So, we had two E L. teachers who teach both the T P I. program and then the T B E. program.
And you had special ed representative?
Yes, special education representative and she was from Blythe. But then also spoke for special education. Yeah. But duly noted.
Yeah.
I can do it by school for the future.
And thank you for breaking that down for me, because that's, I was just kind of like going through and just making sure that I had the right view of who was in here. So, that's, like I said, it's just a picky thing. It's just, it's just the way that I think. And so like I'm not asking necessarily for a change, but that just, it was hard for me to kind of figure out the representation.
I guess for me, I'll just let you know, for me, I was more, you were going by school, I was going by grades.
I was doing both.
Oh, yeah. See, for me?
So, would you like two slides?
No, 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 no.
One by school and one by grades?
What would you like?
I thought it was fun.
Selena liked alphabetical.
I already commented on representation.
It's a me thing, so I will worry about me and I don't need other people to worry about me.
I'll surprise you next time.
Okay. Random, random sampling stuff, okay.
So, I, I, I do have one question, which it really isn't related to curriculum per se, but because we've gone through so many changes so far, how, I mean, it seems like it's, I don't wanna call it, it seems very regular that these companies phase out these curriculums. And I guess my question is how, what lead time notice do they get? Because it seems like we're doing this on, I mean, I know it's not every year, but it's seems?
It feels like every year because, because the way it was adopted and then with the pandemic. And that's where that five-year cycle comes in and so that it hopefully doesn't feel like that as we're able to get that cycle.
But I feel sometimes, but like is this one, this is being phased out? And I forgot which other one was being phased out that we had too.
My perspectives and Ready Gen both being phased out.
Do they give us notice?
They do give us notice. My perspective said you can keep this one, but we're not supporting it anymore.
Yeah.
So, um, we've known, the representative told us probably two, three years ago that they were gonna go out, that that was gonna be phased out. Ready Gen, I think she gave us the same about two, three years notice also. As they start to phase it out, they do give you a couple of years, two or three years?
Okay, so it's not like?
It's not, we're gonna phase it out and, yeah, do something this year.
Okay, all right.
I, I had similar thoughts, David, because yes, it almost seems like there's a built-in incentive to phase this out, come up with something new, call it something different and raise the price twenty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Under a new comment.
And I wouldn't put that past the publishers.
They're gigantic corporations, so they're?
That's not how corporations think.
I have an inner skeptic. I am hearing some, and that's nothing, you're just suffering because of it.
I, I guess in the future, if we, if there's, we come to a curriculum that we actually retain past the five years, that would, you know, a little bit of fireworks, like technically would be a great thing.
We have, so Carnegie Math at the middle school is one where we've reviewed and can, and even the, even though you're changing from the middle school to their new tool, right?
By Carnegie?
Yeah, I'm, and I'm combining now E L A. and math, but in math, you reviewed and kept the same.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, great.
We, I should say, yeah, and, uh, middle?
And E L A. were on the path to keep the same. When I, when Mr. Harvales, Ms. May and I talk with the team, they're not chomping at the bit to get a new resource. They just wanna see what this one is gonna do, if it's gonna be the same, if it's gonna offer a little bit more. But they did not say, we need something now, we need something different. So, um, middle schools are probably a little bit more stable than elementary is. But there's also been, if you think about just some of the changes that have happened in early, uh, early grades education, there have just been a need for some changes. When you think about E L A. and the whole piece about structured literacy and making sure that you are addressing those pieces of Scarborough's rope, Ready Gen did not do that. So, and that's what a lot of districts are finding out is that their reading curriculum wasn't addressing all the pieces that the comprehensive literacy plan is looking for. So, that's why a number of districts are actually looking at E L A. right now for primary grades.
So, as you start thinking about the professional development, personally, I, um, I think the support is critical for all the reasons that Selena laid out. We're throwing a lot at people. So, as we, as you start working with Jim, just kind of breaking that down of like, when you say P D., I'm thinking the specific P D. we have, but it sounds like there's resources to come in and have individual coaching. So, just figuring out what's free and what costs money and why and stuff I think would be helpful as we move forward. We don't need to get into that tonight, but that's just one thought that's in my head. And then, um, I almost forgot this, but the slide at the beginning you had of all the curricular stuff over five years, I have never seen this before and this was absolutely fascinating to me. I loved this. This was very helpful, so?
It's supposed to be on my webpage. I know.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Ian, I think it's deep, though. I think Martha's absolutely right.
Okay.
It's deep, um, and, because even when I went to pull it, I couldn't find it right away. So, I just went to my files. So, as I work on, every summer, we try to work on our websites and make sure we're updating them and there's not dead links. So, as I work on it, I'm looking for the right place to put this.
Yeah.
This, full transparency.
Very, very helpful.
Yeah. And again, it changes, it's fluid.
Yeah.
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 How do you define develop?
Um, so develop is where you are looking at, um, you're having those conversations like we were having with E L A. on what's working, what's not working? Is it something that we can fix with a supplemental material or with a professional learning? Or is it something that we might need to explore other resources? So, it's where you're just starting to have those conversations. Review is where now you're gonna make a decision. We're gonna do a review or in the case of six-eight E L A., we're gonna pilot the new updated resources. Or we're gonna just stick with what we have because we're fine with it, like Carnegie. And then implement is where we're moving into next year, where it's for the first year of implementation. Math, you can see K five math is gonna be in the evaluate stage. We're gonna start looking at now that we've had, um, next year in twenty-four, twenty-five, now that we've had I ready at that point for three years, what is our data showing? What are we seeing happening with our math data? Is it showing growth? Are we showing growth? Are we showing improvements? And then math will roll up to that developing. If we're not showing improvements, what are we missing? How can we fix it? Do we need to look, start thinking about a review and so forth? Did that answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hopefully only two things and then I'll stop.
One, I don't remember if you had mentioned having the outside aggregator of reviews. Is that new?
And reports?
Yes.
Um, it's not new and we did it with math also.
Okay, and I?
It's a resource that educators use all the time, not something new. We did it with math, we did it with science, yeah, it's?
Thank you.
It became really popular when the Common Core state standards came out and all of a sudden state to state, people were really looking at the same standards and information. It's gotten some criticism, but it's gotten some praise, like, like so many things, right?
Sure. Actually, I had another one. The, and with that, this seems like one of the few curriculums where there was really a certain amount of debate on the teacher's side. And that, does that just speak to the fact that either, one, it's a big change in how teaching is going to happen? Or you actually have two really good curriculums that typically we haven't had that competitive of curriculums? Like it seems like in the past, there's just been ones, it's good, but it's, the other one surpasses it by a mile.
I, I think it's both. It's two strong curricular resources that different, two sets of groups found great things that supported their choice, their decision.
Though you love what you love.
Right, right. But, um, again, it brought up great things, it brought up great questions, great concerns, great conversations. And it forced us all to look deeper into both resources to make sure that if someone brought up a concern, something was there and it truly wasn't missing from the program.
Okay. Let, and this, I'll end on this one and this is probably a longer. Are we seeing changes in some of the curriculum development post-COVID? Or is, are they, are the vendors even there yet?
What do you mean?
Strategies for like filling in?
COVID devastated education in terms of what kids learned for two or three years. And so we know that there is, we fell back to some degree. Are the curriculums trying to address that at all? Are we, are, there some insights that came out of COVID education that are being applied? Like I said, this is really broad question and you can just say Joel this later.
It is a broad question. It is a broad question. It is a question I have to think a little deeper on. My initial off-the-cuff response is that the curriculum still seems to be the same, and we have to just, we have to adjust how we teach.
And that's, I think, we already knew we were in a five-year plan for post-COVID, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to the Policy Committee. Ms. Gunn.
Okay, keep our brains on still, policy. Okay, so first read of press issue 114. Obviously, in Board Book, you will see them in kind of numerical order, but I like to try to, I'm not gonna go through each one, of course. I like to try to talk about them via the bundles and the reasons for changes, some of the more material changes that have an impact. So the bundles that you'll find, essentially the issues that you'll find in 114 include like bullying, racism-free schools, some changes in anticipation of the Title IX ruling, and some five-year reviews are what are now known as review and monitoring. So I'm, these are not, again, in order presented in Board Book, but I'm just gonna kind of talk about some of them in terms of the bundles that I thought warranted, kind of, you know, mention. And then, of course, if there's any questions along the way, things that, you know, Martha and I can further look into or discuss with the attorney if needed, et cetera. But these are some of the, the ones that I wanted to provide some additional context on. So one of the, the first kind of bundle, one of the bigger changes is in regards to bullying. So one of the policies, it's 7-180, it's called Prevention of and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment. So essentially, this is a public act that passed last summer, and what it does is it adds new protected categories to the definition of bullying, right? And again, this is by public act, so if you're interested, those new protected categories are physical appearance, socioeconomic status, academic status, pregnancy, parenting status, and homelessness. So these are now characteristics upon which bullying can be based, and are now in policy and law. And you'll see some strikeouts also in that, in that policy, but it's not taking anything away. Those words appear again in the same paragraph, they were just kind of rearranged. So strikeouts are just rearranged elsewhere within the policy. It didn't take anything away. It added new protected categories on which claims of bullying can be brought. And then the second part that was added by public act is in that same policy, and it's a 24-hour notice provision of notification of, of an alleged claim of bullying, which, you know, I'm hopeful that many schools have been doing. I'm confident that's been our internal practice, but this is now kind of formalized via policy. So that was one of the big updates regarding bullying to 7-180. In regards to racism-free schools, so that was another one I wanted to mention, so that's a bill that's going into effect this summer, the Racism-Free Schools Law, as of August 1st. Essentially, the goal is to bring like greater awareness to the issue of race-based discrimination and harassment. It has some various components, which I, I won't necessarily get into, but as a, as a result of that, they created a brand-new policy. I, I know that does not happen often, at least at my time as chair, I've not seen a brand-new policy, but that's 2-270. It's called Discrimination and Harassment on the Basis of Race, Color, and National Origin Prohibited. So essentially, the reason they did this was really just for ease of use. They made this a standalone policy rather than adding like strikeouts and additional subheads to other existing non-discrimination and like harassment prevention policies in press. So even though you're probably thinking like, hey, we already have policies that prohibit discrimination based on, you know, race, color, national origin. But the, this one does require that has specific elements, and those weren't necessarily captured in other policies. So just for clarification, that's what 2-270 is. And if you're curious, the components are a policy and procedures requirement, a training requirement for all district employees that we'll get into, amendment to the Illinois Human Rights Act, and some ISB data collection. So again, we oversee policy, but there are some like administrative procedures that are changed as a result of this, and that's something that Martha and her team oversee. That racism-free schools affected a lot of other different policies. Everything from the twos to the fives to the sevens, so kind of all over the place. Nothing substantial more, just smaller changes. But the one that was significantly impacted by the kind of racism-free schools is 5-100, the Staff Development Program. This one's tagged as rewritten because there were kind of a mass amount of changes. So what it does is it streamlines the training requirements into eight categories. And I'll just mention them to you all. So it's health conditions of students, social-emotional learning, developing cultural competency, identifying warning signs of mental illness and suicidal behavior in youth, domestic and sexual violence, and the needs of expectant and parenting youth, student accommodations, educator ethics, responding to child sexual abuse and grooming behaviors, and violence prevention and conflict resolution. So this is one that Martha, I believe Angela, Nora will be working on, the implementation. It is meant to make things a little bit more streamlined for staff, but this is one that will take, you know, steps to ensure that we are complying with this staff development program. You will see that this one does have a question presented to the board, and in discussions with our attorney, with Nikki, she recommends that we actually answer no.
Oh, really?
Because we do not offer that to every employee. There's specific employees that receive that type of CPR training, nurses, PE teachers, some other. So it's actually not offered to all. So as a result of that nuance, that's why it's, it would be no.
That was actually giving me my primary question is, do we already do it, and what would it cost to do it? So it, really, it'd be a default of no, because we're giving the right people the training, not every, you would say, not everybody needs it?
Well, you know, CPR is an interesting one, right? And we talk about it, it would be, it would be a great skill for everybody to have. CPR is also one of those that you need to keep your license current, and it's a good number of hours to get the training. So we, we've done it in different ways at different times. We kind of distill it down to our nurses and our PE teachers need, need to be the ones trained. It'd be nice in a sort of more perfect world to be able to say, and if you'd like to come, but guess what? The other teachers are gonna go into the ELA curriculum, you know, or something like that, like it's, the time is always a challenge for us. And so I don't want to say these are unimportant at all. I mean, they're very important, it's just that we kind of hone in on the, the employee groups that need it the most.
Yeah, and I don't, my question isn't whether this is important or not. I think it is, it is important. It's, do we, if we already do it, then it's, you know, whatever, but if we don't, I mean, you, you answered my question.
Yeah, it was tricky to figure out what I would recommend for the answer. Stephanie and I talked about this quite a bit, talked with Nikki.
Well, I, I think it's been kind of a default, I was a previous board attorney, but I believe it's been mentioned before that, yes, that if, even if it's a practice that we're regularly practicing, if there's not a reason to bind us to doing it, then, then we really shouldn't.
Yeah.
It's in the board, it's in the district's interest not to.
Yeah.
And Martha, I don't know if there's anything else you had on the staff development program and implementation of, you know.
I mean, it's really, the intentions have been, they've been talked about for a while legislatively, like this idea of really needing to streamline kind of the basic required trainings for staff. We do, we use a, it's called Global Compliance Network, and it's a lot of online trainings, they're brief, but it's the way you can ensure that all staff get some of the basic trainings. It really doesn't get into some of our larger-scale PD, even though some of those things may be enhanced through larger-scale PDs. So I think particularly around like the diversity, equity, inclusion work that we're doing right now, that our staff just did on Friday. They also do a very brief module on that at the beginning of the year, because we also do need to make sure that people are compliant. So there's a, there's a timing, a streamlining, and an effort to make things less onerous around all these different categories of mandated trainings and requirements.
That was a substantial one. So the Title IX stuff right now is actually just kind of getting ahead of, of what is to come. So essentially, right now, what they are doing in press 114 is removing sexual harassment from titles, and they're trying to make all those title changes now in anticipation of this Title IX rulemaking. So, so the depart, what I have here in my notes is, you know, Department of Ed released the final Title IX regulations in April, which I have not yet read, but they go into effect August 1st, and essentially, it's expected that like the scope of the updated regulations is gonna be expanded to apply to all sex discrimination allegations, not merely to allegations of sexual harassment. So we did get notifications that, you know, it's gonna be important for schools to discuss these Title IX requirements with, you know, our board attorney, to ensure full implementation, reduce risk. Also, understanding the complexity of some of the regulations that are gonna come down in press issue like 116 around August. It's gonna likely take four, some time to, right, they sent out like a alert, it's gonna take you guys some time to kind of finalize some of those policies. But they hope, one of the things that will help is adopting the changes right now in 114, which are just to the title. So they're just trying to get ahead of some of it. It doesn't yet change the substance of the policy. These are title changes in anticipation of the Title IX rulemaking. So more to come on that as we become Title IX experts over the summer.
That's, I was sort of wondering, so thanks for that clarification, because I was looking at that one, looking at policies like.
And you're like, it's nothing.
Right, it's like, what?
It's supposed to be big.
Yeah.
Yeah, all it is, is just cleaning up some titles right now as they get ahead of it. But the meat, the substance of the policy, the language, and what is, you know, what the new Title IX provisions say, which again, apparently expand, is more expansive to apply to kind of all sex discrimination allegations. I don't know how that differs from like specifically like allegations of sexual harassment. Again, I guess we'll learn more about what that differentiation means. All of that is coming to be included in our policy. It's just not there yet.
Yeah, I wish they would just do that with the, like the, the discrim, like the bullying and discrimination.
Yeah.
Because I, it's like every year, they're always adding something new.
Right.
It's just like, no discrimination.
Period.
Period, for any reason.
Yeah.
End of story, but.
And I hear you. And then just some of the last ones that I wanted to discuss are what are known as review and monitoring, or what we refer to as five-year review, so obviously, every five years. They all looked fine to me in reading them. The ones that I did want to call out, there are two, and, and thank you, Kathy did a lot of digging with press, like on some of the history of some of these, which are very much like district-specific language. So one of them is 2-140, Communications to and From the Board. Do we have in there, Kathy, the press language? I forget, in Board Book?
So it looks like there are two different versions. I was gonna ask a question of why there are two different versions.
I think I did the press one there, because.
So press plus is.
The press policy is specifically called out from just 2-140.
Right.
Yes, so ours, the way that ours, we adopted it, I don't remember when, 2019, 2019, with our own language, which differs slightly from the press language, so.
Does it? Okay, I didn't pick up on it. I thought it was just attached for all the footnotes.
No, it's like very, very slightly. So the question was, I mean, and we can, again, this is first read, so if we want to table this one to look at it a little bit more closely so you can see some of the difference in language, it's very slight. You know, when I was reading, I told Martha, I was like, well, I read it, and I was like, yeah, this sounds good, and then I read the press one, I was like, oh, well, they've got some things in this one that sound good too. Like, you know, we, we can leave it as is, I think it's fine. I think it captures what we, what we are, what we know for Open Meetings Act, et cetera. But there's just slight variation in language.
I guess it would be interesting to know why we diverge. Was I in on the board then?
We have the whole history of when it was, yeah, adopted.
I don't remember why we would do different.
Yeah, 2019. So maybe that's one, again, that we can all kind of take a closer read at, if everybody's comfortable with the language as is, and we don't think we need to make any changes. I thought it was fine that way. I just thought it was interesting to read.
2-140.
Some of the press language.
Alright, I'll have to go back. I didn't notice any difference. I was more focused on the footnotes, though, because I thought that was the purpose of attaching that, so I'll go back and compare the other language a little closer. I, to me, they, they felt almost identical.
They, they really, I mean, I feel like in the end, we're getting to the same thing, but. And then 4-20, Fiscal Goals and Objectives. This policy is completely like unique to the district.
I'm sorry, which one?
4-20, Fiscal Goals and Objectives. You'll see the language, kind of like our flexible boundaries one, like this one's very specific language that we've created. And I just want to make sure that we're still all on board, that these are, you know, our fiscal goals and objectives that we've all kind of agreed to.
I mean, the one thing I noticed on here, I didn't realize this was unique to us, but the one thing I noticed on here is we underlined the 40. I know that's been a topic of conversation a couple of years, and we've all just agreed to leave it at 40.
Yep.
Which is higher than, I think, is it 30, 33, 20, oh, 25 is the standard, or the minimum, or the recommendation, or I don't remember.
The state, they did that high rating, it's 25%.
Okay.
And I can't remember what the previous policy said, but coming to the agreement of 40% was a very purposeful board agreement around the time that we engaged with all the capital improvements and started.
2018, it was.
I think it may have said like an agreed-upon amount or something, and I don't know if there ever had been an agreement, so the getting to 40%.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's why it's underlined, but yeah.
Maybe. It might be a fill-in.
Yeah, it might have just been arrow and like.
I'm more of the opinion that it's just the remnant of, you need to put a number, or you need to put a number.
Yeah, okay.
And they weren't filling it in for us, but I don't know that for sure.
So with you calling that out, Stephanie, is, is there, is there no standard for 20 fiscal goals and objectives, or we just completely created our own? And is there a comparison to read?
Like the, I don't know if it's in Board Book, sorry, I have my physical hard copy, but.
I didn't actually go look at the board policy.
The comparison is literally, it's very different. It's called fund balances. Is that in there, Kathy, the original?
No, but I have a copy.
I wouldn't mind, just if this is completely unique. I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is. I, I feel like this fits our needs.
Again, yeah, I, I wrote the same thing. I said, ours is very different, discuss questions. I don't know if this aligns well with like our, kind of, you know, KPIs on our, on our stewardship of resources.
Oh, this is short.
Goal. Yeah, that's it, that's what it's called. So ours is very specific to our district.
That is very short and vague.
Yes, it's just called fund balances.
So this probably, I wasn't on the board when this was developed, but yeah, you're, it probably was very intentional.
Is it something that you can read, if it's that short?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
So the, so the actual policy is, "The superintendent or designee shall main, designees shall maintain fund balances adequate to ensure the district's ability to maintain levels of service and pay its obligations in a prompt manner in spite of unforeseen events or unexpected expenses. The superintendent or designee shall inform the board whenever it should discuss drawing upon its reserves or borrowing money. The school district seeks to maintain a year-end fund balance to revenue ratio of no less than 15 to 20% as calculated under Illinois State Board of Education's School District Financial Profile."
Okay.
And then there's a, the footnote is longer than the actual.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that policy is so vague.
Yeah.
And this is not dissing Martha, that, that policy has so much leeway in it.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact that the percentage alone is a range.
Right.
That, that's not, that's so, that's so loosey-goosey, it's kind of pointless.
Oh, that's a good point. So, so the state requirement of 15 to 20 is, so, well, okay, because not everybody is gonna get.
Not everybody gets there, but.
Yeah, alright, so you're mandated to not go below 15, if I'm reading this correctly, but to get the highest rating, it can be no less than 25. I thought it was like 30-something from past discussions, so 25, okay.
And the original adoption date listed in the 4-20 that we have is October of 2011. And then it was revised in 2017 and 2018, and I think that was, I'm just guessing and trying to recollect, I mean, I was here, you know, is coming to that agreement around the 40% fund balance. But also, Stephanie, you, you called out when we were previewing these that this felt like wording of our strategic plan, you know, like.
I just, yeah, I, I agree that we should keep a district-specific, unique policy language, that we should not adopt the generic language for many of the reasons that Joel just stated. I just want to make sure we are comfortable with, you know, the bullet points that we are listing and what we're striving to do within that policy, that we are still all on board, and I, and I, and I should have better checked it with like our KPIs, like, does this match up? Is it aligned with, you know, our strategic plan with the stewardship of resources, or do we still all strive for the 40% fund balance? So, that was it.
Yeah, I, I can't see why we would change from this to what Wesley just wrote.
But it is a good point. If it's just duplicating our strategic plan, should it be a policy? I don't know that it makes a difference, quite honestly, because I think it's good policy.
I think having the 40% in policy is important.
It makes a strong statement that way.
And it's something that a future board may want to think differently about, so, I mean, I think this really. So, I mean, I think this really gets to board and governance and policy and direction.
That's fair, because thinking about it differently, this is the law and our strategic plan is just desires that we have.
And the 40% is unique to our own decision-making.
Yeah, that, that's a good call out. Okay.
Dave, you have some questions?
Quick question. Jim, this says modified accrual basis. Is that what we're on? Maintain a 40% fund balance as a percent of expenditures, parentheses, modified accrual basis for the operating funds. Is that?
Yeah, we're in the accrual.
We are.
Yeah, we're more in 70%.
No, the question was, is the words modified accrual basis what we're actually tracking against?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our.
I think the numbers were from the audit.
Oh, no, I'm not questioning the numbers, but we use modified accrual.
We changed several years ago, we changed our method.
This language makes sense to you, Jim.
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit.
Let's see, I think I recall from an accounting class, is that makers by chance? Modified accrual basis, is that makers? I think it is.
I just know it's, it's supposed to get your expenditures into the right year.
Right.
When I have my own company, I could not pay a bill or, and push it from one year to another for tax reasons. But here, if, if you pay it late, it still gets pushed back and dirty on it.
And that's what I'm going for, is we used to be cash, now we're modified accrual.
Yeah.
Oh, that was the switch that we made.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to remember, but I took a minute to remember everything.
So I guess that's, that's another good call out that you are along with this policy. There's wording that we should be contemplating that doesn't match what we're doing, that would probably be good to call out. Okay, thank you Joel.
Yeah, we can have, maybe just take a look at it. Again, I like, I, I would recommend continuing to have a district-specific policy on this. I just want to make sure, yes, that the bullet points make sense for 2024 adoption as the last time was 2018.
Yeah, okay, that's a good call out.
Any other, do people have questions on any that perhaps I didn't touch on, or?
So I just, I was curious as I was reading the bullying stuff and the anti-discrimination stuff. You answered my first question is, why are they creating a whole separate thing? It feels like it goes with everything else. And my God, you just, I read one of them and it was just a paragraph of commas and words and just like, so basically everything. So you answered that question. But when it comes to the bullying, I kind of, you and I have kind of talked about this on and off, like bullying has a very like specific and defined, I think it has to occur.
Pervasive.
Power and balance, yeah.
Yeah, and all that. So like, when, when you inform us of certain situations where it's pretty elevated and people are getting in-school suspended or whatever for like racist comments or derogatory remarks or something, like, are we using the bullying policy? Or, so that, that is directly real.
I would tell you that 7180 is probably the policy that I read and reread.
Okay.
More than any other policy because.
So even if it's a one-time event, we're still going to follow that?
Yeah, and, and I think parents will often say, my child's being bullied.
Yeah.
I can tell you a situation, I won't tell you about a situation going on right now. Young kids, right? And I would tell you it is difficult social interaction, right? You know, and I think that is the hardest thing that we, you know, Nora's nodding over there, right? You know, like it is, children engage unfortunately in negative social interaction. It happens, it happens, it's part of what we do, it's part of why we have an SEL program. It's, it's our work, right, to help children through those things. It's not necessarily bullying. Oftentimes, it's not bullying, right? But we'll also rely on Angela or Chris Harvales as our non-discrimination coordinators, sometimes then to take that extra look into a situation that seems particularly challenging or particularly hard to sort of sort that piece out. And through that additional investigation, interviews, et cetera, it's often been determined that it's not bullying.
Yeah.
You know, that it's, it's an unfortunate social interaction, these kids need help finding their way out of it, you know? But it's, it's not bullying when you read those definitions. But you do need to go back and, yeah, like I say, read and reread them and think about the situation that you're being presented with and, and interpret it to the best of our abilities and rely on the strength of our team to investigate it.
Okay, that, I mean, that's just where I've personally struggled when, you know, you hear the stories, right? I don't know, it's coming from, with, with mine, you know, nine, 10, 11-year-olds, they embellish things, they misstate the story, but like, some of the things are pretty clear. And it's just like, man, that does feel like bullying, but it, there's a definition to bullying.
Yeah.
And so I guess I liked what you just said, difficult social interactions, learning to interact with other people, and maybe not having the background knowledge, kind of tying that back in of like why those things are offensive or culturally insensitive or something like that. So, okay, I just was curious if that related to those situations? And so the answer to that is yes. I wanted to talk a little bit about 830.
830, yes, sorry. So 830 is kind of separate from press. I wanted to make sure there were no questions on some of the press ones. When you're doing policy review, it always gives you an opportunity to just look at policies in general, whether they have come down via press or not. We've done some of these one-off ones here and there, just in, in reviewing. So this is a policy that we are looking to make some district-specific edits to. It's 830. What is the title? Visitors to and conduct on.
School property.
School property.
And then we want to add, or involving school personnel, I think.
Yes, thank you, I think I have it here. Yes, or involving school personnel. So this one, we wanted to add the definition of, you know, the definition of school personnel, which would include any district employee, ourselves, school board members, district contractors, volunteers. So it's just kind of like, I don't know how to, the code of conduct, how we expect individuals in our district to kind of be treated. And this policy just kind of felt out of date with all of the, like when you think about some of the bullying stuff, like cyberbullying, you know, bullying via texting, emails via social media, this policy was also a little bit, I think outdated in that it really didn't address some of the ways in which this communication can take place with, you know, school personnel specifically. So adding in language about, you know, communicating with school personnel through any means, which would, which would include something like email. So it's not just that an individual come to school and physically have, you know, a confrontation. It can also be the way in which individuals communicate with defined school personnel via something like email. And then it also has in here enforcement, right? Like what some of the consequences might be for individuals who do not follow or adhere by this policy that we have in place, facing limitations on access to, you know, to school property, but also expand, expanding that to maybe something like communication with school personnel. So that was one that we wanted to talk about. Wes, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
No.
I know we had discussions.
Yeah, I just want to bring that up. And then I just was, I'm assuming the blue, this was just very different than the way like a lot of the press things are updated with the highlights and stuff. So is it the blue parts we want to add in?
The blue parts is what we want to add in, yes. And we looked at some, like neighboring district schools, right Martha?
Yeah, yeah.
That had policies that just captured, you know, school, were able to provide additional protections for the defined school personnel individuals. And again, expand the definition to include things like, you know, communicating via, I don't know, email or social media or things of that nature.
And really the intent here, because you mentioned like, since the bullying and all that discrimination stuff was on here, tying it in, that makes sense. Like the real intent here is just not allowing anyone to have, I don't know the right way to like, we're talking about like egregious bullying-like behavior, not you're upset, you send an angry, angry email or something, but it, it's like, we as a board haven't had any nasty grams since the end of COVID. And even those really weren't that bad, but I've heard of examples where, I mean, or you just see it in the news with other politicians of just the vitriol spewed towards people with no clear intent and purpose other than to try to injure people. That's kind of more what we're talking about is like belligerent behavior more than anything else is, is kind of what I'm trying to clarify.
It could be disruptive. I mean, I think disruptive is kind of one of the key pieces to it, too, really truly disruptive to the school environment. That's, that's how the original visitor one came through, but I think the same can happen with social media, email, et cetera.
Yeah, okay. And I just use us as an example because that's an easy one. I, I think we should take a lot more probably being politically elected, so to speak, but, or public individuals, but yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, so, all right. That's all. I read, I found the other version of this and it was, all the blue parts were struck out on the other one and I just wanted to make sure I was looking at that correctly, so.
Okay, yeah.
That's all I have.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was the last thing on, on policy.
Okay. And any other questions before we move on?
No.
Okay, thank you Ms. Gunn and Dr. Rantone. We're going to move on to Finance Committee, so Mr. Barsadi.
Sure, so as you've seen, there's a amendment, we're moving some things around. I'm going to turn over to Jim to explain it in more detail.
Most years we've amended the budget as we get to the end of the year. So there's some changes in the expected spending and mainly the transfer to capital is the biggest number. And when we do that, you have to follow the same steps that you did when you approved the budget originally last August. So next, on the 15th, next meeting, we'll have the hearing at the beginning and have a vote to approve the amendment later in the meeting. My memo outlines a few of the small adjustments. The biggest one that I would want to point out is the 2.2 million that I want to transfer from operating funds into capital projects. It's money that I had planned to move next year, well, 2 million I had planned next year. So the amount from this budget and next budget added together, we'd be moving 6 million where I had projected 5.8 million. And a couple of reasons to do that is it gets a little tight paying some larger bills in the summer if we, especially if we don't meet in August and we transfer it in September. Plus, I think that transferring it will give us a more realistic or accurate fund balance at the end of the year. So the 2 million doesn't count in the fund balance and then it's really committed to being spent. Will give us, it'll look like a slightly lower fund balance pay.
So it's tight paying bills over the summer for the projects in process?
Right, the ones we committed to already. So that's, that's the big change that I wanted to get there, pull the money over earlier. Any questions?
No, this all made sense. I guess the only question I had was, so if only line one, $100,000 shift because transportation costs went up, is it purely just the, is this like the balanced budget piece of it? If you go over the limit that you've approved by even a dollar, we have to go through this? Or?
We think that was.
I'm just trying to think if we've ever had a big.
Special electric transportation went up. And so we took it out of a different part, like a similar account, but put it where it's being spent.
Let me, let me ask that differently. I'm asking a very high-level question. So the expending more than the budgeted total for a fund requires the budget to be amended using the same exposure. So I guess now that I'm rereading it again, so each fund independently, if you spend even a dollar more than what was originally, you've got to.
That's one of the criteria.
Okay. I didn't have any questions about what you were doing. Well, I hope you don't. All right. All right, thank you. That was a quick one. All right, so we move on to Facilities Committee. Mr. Marhol.
Thanks. We met last week. Discussion topics were, we touched on all the topics. Basically, Central Hauser is proceeding. You will note that there is the very large tall construction fence around the site. Martha noted that there haven't been complaints about where the teachers are parking or staff are parking, although they're not necessarily taking advantage of the Masonic Lodge spaces, but we'll see what that looks like in the next few weeks. But we don't anticipate a lot of anything there. We think we've communicated well. We know that the recreational field will take some time to grow and establish, so we will be fencing that off and not just depending on the black ornamental fence to keep people out, because we know that after-school activities or weekends, people get creative. And then also the field will not simply be a, hey, it's this calendar date, we're good to go. We will ask the landscaper and the landscape architect to assess that the grass has properly established and grown.
That's your chance.
Yes.
I, I will make one note here, during the half-day, I might have been made aware of potential parking issues at Central Hauser Campus for professional development later in that day. It might have been expressed to me rather passionately.
Can you summarize somewhat, just was it an issue of parking was difficult?
Oh, I guess with the parking lot under construction, and I guess you mentioned that teachers were not, you know, having issues or that, that's understood. I guess with the professional development being an unusual event, that the accessibility of parking to the teachers coming in from elsewhere was potentially, anticipated to be an issue.
Right, and we did, we did reach out to people and tell, because it was one of the rare occasions, we gathered our whole staff in the auditorium. So the only place we can do that is at the Hauser Auditorium. And it was, given that it was a half-day, we sort of said, how about carpools and the Masonic lot? And then it also turned out to be terrible weather, if you recall. We had just like a huge rain down for right about the time it all ended. So that was unfortunate, but it looked to me like people were getting into cars in groups, that people took us up on the idea to carpool over. So I, I think people made the best of it, but I appreciate hearing that. Like that is something we, with all of our meetings, we've sort of been like, can we do it there? Can we do it somewhere else? And really weighing that. And I think today our discussion was that parking's not great at any of our schools. You know, I mean, really.
For that many people.
For that many people, right.
Right, right, right.
And I think the, and Dan, that's a good point. And I think Martha's done a good job of trying to communicate well. And there is never going to be a, this is more personal perspective, so you can put it in, give it in that, put it in that bucket. But there is never going to be a time when extreme need for parking, when you have a giant group gathering, is ever going to be met at any of our schools. They're never designed for that. And.
I'm speculating a bit here, but I'm, I'm going to guess that the way people have parked at the Central Hauser lot in the past, when there've been, you know, large gatherings or people kind of line up one after another, after another, and kind of get creative in some places, given the way that the parking lot's going to be changed and relayed out, that's going to have fewer opportunities for such creativity.
Probably, yes.
I think it'll be better lined and I think the sidewalks and the fencing and all those things will interfere with the, the creative parking that we've seen, absolutely. Yeah, which, which will just mean I know people are going to have to park further up the street. I mean, I was at the Hollywood Harmony High last night and at Hollywood, you got to go up around the block, if, you know, so it just, everywhere, I think that's the way it, the way it is in our schools, yeah.
Because we're not designing for that peak unique event.
Yeah.
We can't.
Yeah, it's unnecessary.
And I realize, and I realize I'm probably sounding somewhat unsympathetic, but.
No, I think it's the reality of the situation. You've got a handful of events, you can't build for the maximum, the maximum population's minimum use.
You could, but we don't want to.
I mean, you can, but it's a bunch of wasted space and resources.
And it ends up being not used 95% of the time, and then it becomes a waste. So it's noted, I don't think, we're, we're not trying to create a problem, but when we have to block off 75% of the parking lot, it's going to be a lot worse at the one location where we can gather everyone together.
Yeah, we appreciate the feedback, but appreciate also people being patient and flexible. I think that's, that's what's been, I'll say, the pleasant surprise and all, but yeah.
Sounds like that's ultimately what happened.
Yeah.
And next year.
Flexibility and creative.
Next, next, yeah, next fall it'll be better because the parking lot will be built. So we'll be back to a more normal situation.
They were, what are we adding, 10 spots?
We were adding a few.
From the calculation, but to Dan's point.
It's more than currently.
It might feel like a loss because now it's actually organized.
And well in that.
Yeah, it is organized. Thinking of that now, that first, you know, dance recital or first band performance or something like that, I don't know, that might, people might run out of spots more quickly than expected.
I think they run out of spots today, quite honestly, I stopped driving because it's such a mess.
They probably will.
Even the band and orchestra.
Do we even have like a lot closed?
Yeah, right, right, right. But I know the band and orchestra modified how they did, right, they went fifth, seventh, took a break.
Yeah.
Six, eight, and it was an effort to address the, what they knew would come up as parking concerns.
I had a feeling that's what that is about, I'm not on all those, but like those that my kids are involved with, I have noticed the big all school groups have been really broken down. And I think I recall you talking about that this year or last year of just trying to be more intentional of, like here we had, maybe at all the schools, but I think this past year Ames got super crowded as always with Veterans Day. And I think that always just becomes a challenge and so I think breaking it up, it real, to me feels better.
Safer, yeah.
I think that's been a big improvement, I've experienced that as being a big improvement.
Trying to break up Veterans Day though, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
It is a good holiday to bring up, that's a very good example.
But with the plays and things we can schedule, I think that, that has been beneficial, but yeah, like Veterans Day, I don't think you can do anything about that. Okay, noted with your passion though, the, the passion.
Yeah, not mine necessarily.
Yeah.
I was passionately listening.
Yeah.
Summer maintenance of the Ames Tuck Pointing is still scheduled and on target, I believe that'll be about six weeks. Not much to say there, we had an extensive discussion about future security plans and that was specifically related to controlled entrances and cameras. And noting that as Don has been looking at things, trying to plan for future, future needs, both cameras, door access, meaning key fobs and cards and sensors that tell you when doors are open, as well as knowing that potential PA improvements in the clocks that. And I'll summarize for Don and then you get to correct me, that we're trying to make sure that when we are doing wiring and cable pulls, that we're doing everything in a location all at once and not going back in the future. So to that end, Don and Ramesh are looking at trying to develop kind of a comprehensive plan and then seeing what aspects of that plan can be implemented or should be implemented all at once for efficiency. So it, what it means is that the cabling plan has grown in scope and so we're assessing that at this time. The big thing is with, we want to know and be sure that all of our exterior doors are controlled and there's never a time where anybody can inadvertently get into them. So that means sensors and key fobs and control access points. Don, did I do that justice or not?
I summed it up, it's, there's a lot of different systems that especially where technology's gone. We want to present all the options to you so we make sure that as we're looking forward, that we're not again going back and having to re-cable. This is a, I guess a project that maybe you do once every fifteen, twenty years. The last structured cabling project the district did was about fifteen, twenty years ago. So it's, yeah, I want to make sure that it's comprehensive and it's kind of blown up, which is kind of outside of my realm of doing a project of that size. That's why I bring in Ramesh, because it's just a larger scale project.
That's good to know, because like you mentioned Ramesh and I was just thinking like, I don't remember him being involved, so that, it's just the scope has gotten bigger.
The scope is just, yeah, it's really been.
It's planning.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, we're in the planning phase and trying to assess what we need and then how to implement that.
Okay.
Then there were some others and that is, we know the Blythe Playground is showing its age and so we're going to be talking to the village because they've got some maintenance responsibilities over there as well and trying to look at that collaboratively. And make sure that if we're talking about equipment replacements, that we bring back an equivalent playground in terms of equipment. And s, equipment, the space around equipment has expanded as time has gone on, as people get more risk averse. So equipment needs to spread out a little bit more than maybe it was twenty years ago.
Like by code, right?
It's codes and safety zones and making sure there's never any risk that things can interfere. We talked about the central playground and noted that that equipment is also showing its age, but we were also looking at that as a replace in kind and not trying to get, not trying to expand that scope. Since we've got the rear playground that will be new and fancy and has all the bells and whistles that the kids wanted.
Just for clarification, the Blythe Park Playground is property exclusively of the village, correct?
It's, I think it overlaps a little bit and knowing that we're, we're collaborative.
That, that's all their equipment or whatever.
It's what, they maintain it and they installed it originally, yes. And we, we know that the village has a five year, or they're working on a long range plan, but we also know that their funds are much more limited. And so we'll start some initial communications and see where things are at, but our goal is not to, not to let that playground fall by the wayside. And we talked a little bit about some sustainability things, but there's nothing, nothing of significance on that front.
Could I have some question?
Yeah, always.
So I think a couple of months ago, I said this somewhat in passing, but every time I go to the Ames Gym, the speaker system crackles and it drives me nuts. I don't know if that's still happening, but can we get that looked at?
We can put that, we will put that.
I've only got twenty-one days left here, but.
It's a comprehensive of all the elementaries and we put in, actually they were, they wrapped up last week.
Okay.
So they, there are similar systems across the board, down all the elementaries.
Okay, that was giving my next question, is, is it unique to here?
No, they're, so, so yeah, it's all brand new wireless in there.
Oh, so we've already fixed all of that stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't been in there for a while, so.
The only thing that needs to be replaced, and it's, it's only to ask you of Ames, is they do have like at Hauser, because if the stage has some, some cabling, some hardware, audio cabling.
Okay.
And we're going to do that over the summer.
Okay, all right, so that's fixed.
Yes.
Okay.
And over the summer, we're also going to, yeah, the standardize across the elementary video.
Okay.
As well, so that'll be integrated into the audio.
All right.
Each school will have a nice presentation space.
Thank you. Thanks, Joel.
Sure.
It's fast. Any other questions for anybody else? Right, if not, I think that moves us to, I don't know, Ms. Claps, Mr. Hunt, anything on personnel committee for tonight?
No, meeting was held of the Personnel Committee Steering Committee the past month, most recent.
Maybe just a, a comment, we don't talk about it much here, but Dave and I are part of the PLT Leadership Committee. So we are attending a meeting of the PTO presidents on a monthly basis after the board meetings, just to give them updates. And it did come out of that, I, I find it's a really great opportunity to see sort of people, people, we have a team of really deeply involved and caring people and are, leading our PTOs. And so it's a good opportunity to meet with them. And as part of the conversation that happened last month, Kim Hefner came in and presented a little bit about the summer school program. And it's tied to personnel as well, but she said that this year, sort of the return to normal post COVID is happening. And as a result, there are more teachers who were interested in being summer school teachers. And so as a result, they've been able to develop a pretty robust program for this coming summer. And if you haven't, take a look at the curriculum, they have a, a good program that they've put together.
Cool, yeah, I did the, I don't remember how long I did the PTL, but yeah, that was always good, because you get all the PTO presidents and just their perspectives and how we can work together. So glad to hear that's continuing forward. All right, if nothing else, that is it, I'm going to guess we have no other public comment, not seen anybody, Kathy. All right, so future meeting dates, we've got May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, there'll be a regular business meeting at seven PM in the Hauser Auditorium. On June fifth, there will be no recorded public meeting, we're going to do a board self assessment, which is facilitated by an IASB representative. So that's officially a closed session, that'll happen at six PM in the library here at Ames. And June twelfth, we will have a regular business meeting at seven PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.